All right, the time is 6:00 PM. The date is Tuesday, July 6th, 2021. This is our regularly scheduled town council meeting. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Billingsley, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes. Councilmember Hughes is present. Councilmember Rodriguez, absent. Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cortez, absent. Mayor Walter.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a form.
All right, thank you so much. At this time, we will begin the meeting with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you so much. At this time, we will go ahead with our call to the public. Call to the public is for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit the public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless those matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. At this time, call to the public is open. Is there anybody who wishes to speak at this time?
Madam Mayor, we have two members of the public wishing to speak. At this time, Kathy Adam could be the first.
All right, Ms. Adam.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I am here to thank you, the town staff, and a special shout out to Hezekiah, who's probably still resting, and Allison, and Ray, and the whole Parks and Rec. I thought that was an absolutely fabulous Fourth of July. I think one of the best, I don't know if it's because we were off last year, but it was really, really, I was so proud of us and I saw everybody. I don't think I've ever seen so many young children there, right? And they were, they were safe, the lawn was terrific. I liked where we did it. I thought it was a nice set, nicer setup than when we were in the parking lot. So everything, again, I just want to say was so terrific. And what I really appreciate is that we did the school drive. I'm old enough to remember, when I went to school, I didn't have to bring my own paper and pencils and pens, it was supplied. And it just really bothers me that any child is going to school maybe without the supplies to learn. So I really appreciate that we did that drive, so thank you.
Thank you so kindly, and I agree. Everybody, fabulous job. Our next speaker is Ms. Chris, come on up, how are you?
Good to see you, Chris Reed, Florence. Again, I want to echo what Kathy said, that was a really dynamite display of fireworks. Incredible how long it goes on, it's amazing. My little issue, it's nothing really major, but when we consider what people see when they approach town, I think I brought this up at the H-Deck meeting some time ago. The highway sign for Butte, if you look at it, the one facing south, is almost completely obliterated. It is so faded and weather worn that you cannot see it. And to me, that just says something about how much we care about you as you come into town, that you can find your way. And I understand that's not something you folks have any control over, but maybe, you know, putting a little pressure on ADOT might increase the speed that something gets done. So, thank you. If you drive by, take a look at it, you'll see it's really pretty awful.
I will absolutely take a look at it. I'm also going to give direction for our town manager to coordinate with ADOT to get that fixed in conjunction. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Yes, come on up. And then after, if you could just fill out a speaker form so we could have it on file with Mr. Ben Bitter? All right.
My name is Linda Turner, 56, I always have to, 5687 West Victory Way, out in Anthem. And I'm here in response to Michelle Cortez. Vice Mayor had made a request that anybody that's paying higher taxes in Florence to come forward and let her know. I did some research, I moved here six years ago from the Atlanta metropolitan area, and believe it or not, I pay more taxes here than I did in the Atlanta metropolitan area. And with the increase that you guys are voting on tonight, I will be paying almost $3,000 a year for my taxes alone, just to live in Florence. When in the Atlanta metro area, which Cobb County, where I lived, was a highly sought-after area, I had a lot of property there. And I paid, I looked at the tax rate for this year, it's 283736. Right now in 2020, my tax is 281388, and it's scheduled to go up with this vote tonight. So I will be hitting over $3,000 to live in Florence. And I did grow up in this town, and recently moved back, and it just flabbergasts me that I'm paying more taxes here than I did in the metro Atlanta area of Georgia. So, I mean, that's really all I have to say about that. She wanted proof of that. But I also want to thank Ms. Jimenez. She was right on it. I asked her questions about my taxes, she got back to me promptly. And I just wanted to thank Becky Jimenez for getting back to me so promptly and quickly. Thank you, Becky.
Thank you. And then also, just in accordance with an opportunity of responding, I'm going to have Ms. Jimenez, because there are differences in different areas of our community as a whole, the town of Florence. In the Anthem specific area specifically, we are an HOA community, and there's other guidelines that go along with that. So at this time, I'll have Ms. Becky Jimenez just share into the record your discussion and just kind of clarifying the difference between those areas in our community as a whole.
Sure. The town has a primary property tax, and that is levied against the whole municipality. Now, if you're out in the Anthem area, you have a different types of secondary property tax out there that add to your tax bill. There are for your general obligation bonds for the CFD, and that's for your shared improvements out there. And then you also have a streetlight improvement districts. And depending on which district you're in, they do have different tax rates. So that would affect your total property tax bill. The town, though, we have to look at it in a place where you choose to live. You know, for the most part, and I'm, whenever you're going through a real estate transaction, they have to disclose that to you. And we down here in South Florence do not have any ad valorem taxes or secondary property taxes, because it's already been an established community that has no bonding on it. That is the difference between the Anthem area and the town of, basically, general town of Florence. So you have your primary, and then your secondary property taxes, so.
Right, and she had explained that to me, and as far as the light districts and all of that too, because I didn't know if I was going to fall into that. So she did answer that question for me. And I understand all of that, but it's just, you know, and I had the same, we had the same kind of taxes where I lived in Georgia, but I'm still paying more to live out, yeah, live out in Anthem than to live in Florence proper. I just, I just wish we didn't have to pay so many taxes.
I understand that.
And Mr. Billingsley, you had your hand.
Madam Mayor, in response to the Vice Mayor's question regarding comparison of tax rates in Pinal County, staff put together a very nice form that compares taxes in Florence versus all the other cities in Pinal County. And it's part, it's included as one of the attachments on Item 11A. And I'm sure Ben can, can get a copy of that attachment to Ms. Turner, but for anybody out there in TV land, that attachment on 11A shows that the town of Florence has the lowest property taxes in Pinal County with regard to primary tax rate. But that doesn't obviously include the CFDs or the SLIDs as part of it. Those are additional for a specific area.
Okay, thank you so much for those clarifications. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak at this time, whether they are attending virtually or in person?
If you are an attendee on the Zoom platform and would like to participate in the public comment, please raise your hand on the platform at this point. Madam Mayor, do not see any other wishing to comment at this time.
All right, thank you so much. At this time, we will go ahead and close our call to the public. Item 6 is adjourned to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 1. At this time, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we adjourn to the Community Ranch Facility District Number 1.
My second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. Item A is the second reading and discussion approval disapproval of ordinance number MRCFD 111821. This is an ordinance of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 1, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the Community Facilities District, subject to taxation of a certain sum upon each $100 evaluation, sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for the community service, community facilities expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2022. Ms. Becky Jimenez.
I'm going to turn this over to our Deputy Finance Director, Carl Dudding. He does the CFDs.
Thank you, Mr. Dudding.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and District Board Members. There are two levies in CFD 1. There's the debt service levy and the administration levy. The debt service is the GEO levy. That rate is .8588 per $100 of net assessed value. This levy will generate $326,205 to cover the annual debt service. The admin rate is .30 per $100 of net assessed value. This will generate $113,948 in revenue. The combined levy for CFD Number 1 is 1.158 per $100 of net assessed value.
Thank you, Mr. Dudding. And also, just a point of clarification for our audience, both in person and virtually. Whenever this item comes before our council, we always look at what the debt service is being funded, as well as the ad valorem levy. And continually, it does not exceed $3.25 per $100 net assessed valuation, as well as the ad valorem of 30 cents per 100 net assessed valuation. So considering that, everything is remaining the same.
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much. I just wanted to make sure that that was communicated, because even though this is on, and there will be a discussion and a vote, we are continuing with the same rate as we have had since December of 2006 as far.
I apologize. The 3.2 is the max?
Yes.
That we can levy?
Correct.
This year, we're levying .8588?
Correct.
Per 100.
But I was just saying with the max, like, we've always stayed consistent with that communication of the 325 per $100 net assessed and the 30 cents per $100 net assessed. That has been consistent in all of our language, even though we always levy less.
In CFD 1, we're levying below the maximum?
Yes.
Okay.
But what I'm trying to say is, when Anthem was created in the town of Florence, and I know this because I was one of the first residents that moved to Anthem, so I have listened to the council meetings, as well as through my time on council, engaged, and Ms. Jimenez gave an amazing explanation, and she continually informs both council, as well as our public, of the ad valorem and the debt service, and how it will never rise above that.
Yes, you're absolutely right. It will never go beyond $3.25 on the GEO side and 30 cents on the administrative side. Just in CFD Number 1, we don't have a large debt service, so the amount that Mr. Dudding has stated will cover the debt service for this next year.
And the same language in CFD Number 2 is the same in regards to the amount and the communication that has happened since inception?
Yes.
I just wanted to make that point. All right, at this time, I am going to go ahead and open public comment regarding this item. This is open to public, as well as council. Are there any questions or comments?
Well, I have a comment relative to previous speaker. This is a statutory thing. We don't have much of a choice, we have to approve this, so you understand.
And again, it ties back to the language since the CFD was created back in December of 2006. All right, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. And the floor is open to a motion, and this will be a roll call.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve MRCFD 111821.
Second.
My second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Mendoza?
Yes.
Board Member Neal?
Yes.
Board Member Hughes?
Aye.
And Chairperson Walter?
Aye.
Thank you. Vote is unanimous and passes.
Thank you. Item B, discussion approval disapproval of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 1, June 21st, 2021, special meeting minutes. Is there any member of council that has any questions or comments regarding the way the minutes are documented?
Nope.
At this time, we need a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes as recorded. I had a 6B.
My second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. We need a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 1?
I make a motion, we adjourn from the community district Number 1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We need a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 2?
I make a motion, we adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number 2.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item A is the second reading and discussion approval disapproval of ordinance Number MRCFD 221821. This is an ordinance of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 2, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the Community Facilities District, subject to taxation of a certain sum upon each $100 evaluation, sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for the community facilities expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2021, 2022. At this time, I will ask Mr. Dudding if he has anything additional that he would like to say at this.
Madam Mayor, District Board Members, as with CFD 1, there are two levies in CFD 2. The first is the debt service levy to cover the GEO bond. That levy is 3.25 per $100 of net assessed value. This will generate $848,615 required to cover the annual debt service. The second levy is the admin levy, that is .3 per $100 of net assessed value, that will generate $78,334. The combined levy is 3.55 per $100 of net assessed value. And the combined revenue is $926,949.
All right, thank you so much. Is there anybody from, I'm opening the public hearing at this time. Is there anybody from public or on our council that would like to ask any questions or state any comments at this time? Okay, please let the record reflect that the same comments as previous also apply to this agenda item as well. And with no further motion to speak, we'll close public comment at this time. And at this time, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve MRCFD 221821.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Board Member Anderson?
Aye.
Board Member Mendoza?
Aye.
Board Member Neal?
Aye.
Board Member Hughes?
Aye.
And Madam Chair Walter?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous and has passed.
Thank you. Item B is discussion approval disapproval of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 2, June 21st, 2021, special meeting minutes. Is there any member of council that has any questions or comments at this time regarding this agenda item? Seeing no motion or no comment, at this time, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the June 21st, 2021 minutes.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 9, we need a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 2?
I make a motion, we adjourn from Community District, Merrill Ranch Community District Number 2.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 10 is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval of accepting the register of demands ending May 31st, 2021, in the amount of $6,260,942.99. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the accepting of the register of demands ending in March, or correction, May 31st, 2021.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 11 is unfinished business. Item A, this is the second reading and discussion approval disapproval of ordinance Number 703-21, an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the town of Florence, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 evaluation, sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for general municipal expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2022. Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Thank you, Mayor and Town Council. This is our primary property tax levy. Last year, we had a rate of 1.0585 per $100 in net assessed valuation, and levied $1,204,862. It is the levy, not the rate, that drives the tax levy, and the rate will fluctuate every year depending upon the net assessed valuation on real and personal property. The primary property tax levies are based on limited property values, and the maximum allowable rate this year is 1.0802, or $1,319,321. This would have been a rate increase of .0419 per $100 of net assessed valuation, or $4.19. This would have brought in an additional $114,459. But in discussion with the town manager and administration, we decided just to levy a dollar six. That's about midpoint. That way, it makes it kind of comparable to what we levied as far as a rate last year. And that rate would give us $1,294,649, or an increase of $2.17 over the current rate. It would bring in an additional $89,787 in property tax. The property taxes, primary property taxes are used in the general fund to fund all services, including administration, police and fire, community service, and community development. So this is only 8% of our total revenues in the general fund. So, given that, we're presenting this levy for your consideration tonight.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to open up public comment. It's open to public, as well as our council, for any comments, questions that you'd like to speak into the record at this time.
Yes. Becky, can you give us a general ballpark of what the increase would be on an average home?
That is very difficult to do, because it depends on how much, how much the home is. All I can do is give you, on a $100,000 home?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, it would be $106 per $100 of net assessed valuation.
Increase?
No, that's, per $100 of net assessed valuation, it's $106. So depending on the value of your property, you would multiply?
Sure.
That times a dollar six.
So, what I was getting to is, what is the increase?
$2.17 over the prior year's levy.
Okay.
And it just depends on your property tax value now. I can't say that your property taxes will not increase, because it depends on what the assessed value is this year. So it's hard to say what an average increase would. I can only give you per $100.
Sure, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions or comments at this time? Going ahead and closing the hearing. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance 703-21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes?
Aye.
Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Vote passes 5 to nothing.
Item B, this is the second reading and discussion approval disapproval of ordinance Number 704-21, an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the Streetlight Improvement District, Number 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, subject to taxation of a certain sum upon each $100 evaluation, sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for streetlight operations for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2022. Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is for our streetlight improvement districts that are in the Anthem area. These are the five active ones. We, Streetlight Improvement District Number 1 would be a zero levy, because we have adequate funds to carry through this year. And I should have backed up and said, this is for electrical costs for the operations and maintenance of the streetlights. Number 2 is also zero, because I have adequate funds to cover the electrical costs this year. Number three is a point one-three-five-eight per one hundred dollars, or thirteen dollars and fifty-eight cents per one hundred dollars of net assessed valuation. District number four and number five are brand-new districts, and they're levied at the maximum of a dollar twenty per one hundred dollars of net assessed valuation. Uh, number four will have enough funds to cover thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars, and that should get us through the year. And number five will only be a total levy of about four hundred dollars, but it will get this district on the tax rolls. So that is your, uh, streetlight improvement district secondary property tax proposed levies for this year.
At this time, I'm going to open it up for any comments or questions. Seeing no such move, go ahead and close it and ask for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve ordinance seven oh-four dash two-one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, can we have a roll call, please?
Council member Anderson?
Aye.
Council member Mendosa?
Aye.
Council member Neil?
Aye.
Council member Hughes?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye.
By your vote of five to zero, the ordinance passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you so much, and thank you for taking the time, both you and Mr. Dudding, to put the information together into the packet. It's very easy to understand, so I appreciate that, I also appreciate when citizens have questions and you have the knowledge and expertise to be able to walk them through and answer those questions, and I really do sincerely appreciate that, and I also want to say that, so if anybody in the future has questions in TV land, they know that they can reach out, and you're always there to help and support.
Thank you, it's a lot of fun to talk to the citizens about this and hope to hopefully clarify things a little bit for them because it is very confusing on the tax levy, so thank you.
You are very welcome and appreciated. Item number twelve is our legislative report and our our own Mr. Bitter. How are we looking? How, how did things happen?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Uh, the legislature passed a budget finally on the last day of the fiscal year, so June thirtieth, uh, and then quickly wrapped up their session, see, signee die, and so as we look at the budget, we see some pros and cons, and I think that's, uh, that's generally how you feel at the end of a legislative session. Uh, one of the greatest things that we did, we were able to get in the budget was a specific earmark for a million dollars for the Butte Avenue Bridge that we will see reconstructed here, uh, in, in the next year or two or three, who knows? We'll see the terms that the ADOT puts on that, but, uh, we should see that, that improvement done in our town, and that was a specific earmark that Representative Cook and Senator Shope were able to get into the budget, so very appreciative for that. Uh, the income tax proposal did pass through the budget. Um, that has some impact on the town in future year budgets, not in this coming fiscal year, the current fiscal year that we're in now, or the coming fiscal year, but in, in two, two years from now, we will see the impacts on that, and so uh, we'll certainly keep an eye on that and, and measure the impacts, but, uh, other than that, happy to answer any questions, but that's all I have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bitter? Nope, followed it, and I absolutely agree with your sentiments, there were some pros and there were some cons, and in government, I guess that's how it should be, so that way everybody is I don't know, maybe. Our manager's report, which was very well-written, I, I know you have a lot to share, so, Mr. Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, uh, members of council, I have a whole bunch of things to share, not necessarily from the report in the packet, but there are so many other good news items to share that I want to take an opportunity to do that. Uh, thank you, Ben, uh, one of the first things I was going to mention is that we received an earmark for the Butte Road Bridge, we've been trying to get funding for that project for five years, uh, and so it's, it's, it's great uh, for the prison system, it's great for our fire and police departments to be able to replace that bridge at some point here in the near future, so very exciting prospect. Uh, I know that there'll probably be a lot said about it, uh, during the council reports, uh, but I wanted to just report again on congratulations to everyone for such a successful event, uh, on July fourth. Um, what, what a neat event, uh, we reached our max capacity at swimming pool and actually had a, a waiting line, uh, we anticipate, uh, that about four thousand people came to our event, uh, we had two inflatables out there that were used very well. Uh, one of the things that I think was the highlight of the Fourth of July, beyond the fireworks, was using our new type-two engine, uh, out there to, to spray folks down uh, in the wet zone, uh, I saw a lot of people taking us up on that and went and talked to the firefighters, and they very much enjoyed spraying people as well, Jim, so uh, they, they got their enjoyment, uh, at the event as well. Excellent event by everyone involved, uh, really thought that the participation from the Legion downtown and the color display was very well-received, uh, by everyone, so that was my first item. Second item is Catherine Wilson has been appointed as a member of the board for the Grand Canyon IPMA HR group, uh, so an exciting opportunity for her to reach out on a statewide level, uh, and participate. The next item I have is Ms. Our own, Alan Valander, uh, has received his certified economic developer cert from the International Economic Development Council, so a huge achievement for him that involved testing, interviews, uh, and, uh, he's very excited, I know, to, to put that certification uh, on his resume and his, his business card. Uh, lastly, this, this is somewhat of a surprise, uh, but it's very exciting. Uh, the town of Florence has applied to FEMA for two years now, uh, for what's called the BRIC program, uh, for what we call the Hazard Mitigation Project, which is a detailed study of the Gila River Channel, uh, and the flood plains associated with that. We have been approved, uh, by FEMA's local offices and the district, and are going to go, uh, back to Washington DC uh, as part of the fiscal year building resilient infrastructure in communities, flood mitigation assistance funding, very competitive, very difficult, uh, to, to get this level of funding, it's usually for very large agencies. Uh, and if I remember correctly, Florence, uh, is the second highest-funded, uh, organization here in the West, only behind the Yabba-Pai County Flood Control District. So, uh, a very exciting thing, so that's, that's what I had for tonight.
All right, well, thank you so much. Did you say four thousand?
Four thousand people, we estimate at the event. If you want to know how we came up with that estimate, uh, it was full parking spaces, so we were able to know how many parking spaces we had full at the event, uh, and come up with an average number per car, to come up with around that four thousand number, yes.
That is incredible.
As you know, that grass area was full at the, at the fireworks time, and I will tell you, one of the ballfields, uh, probably was a third field full as well, not counting some of the other areas we had for viewing, so very successful event.
And you know, I, I do want to give a shout-out on how well our staff was prepared and ready to go with that, I just happened to be over by the side stage area, and there was a family that came over, and they were looking for a little boy, and Hezekiah happened to be right there. And I gave that family to Hezekiah, who immediately went over to where they needed to be, and apparently that was the meeting point. And it was a very quick reunification for that family, so I just want to say kudos because there is a lot of planning that goes into these events and a lot of coordination. Our staff did phenomenal, it was such an amazing event.
In case anybody doesn't know, we planned for these event, events months in advance, and we started detailed plans, uh, for the protocols, and we handled this like a national emergency uh, under our emergency protocols through the Police and Fire Department, uh, and submitted a booklet that's about a half-inch thick prior to the event with all of our contingency plans, everything that had been discussed that could possibly go wrong, how we would solve that. Uh, we had more staff at this event, uh, than any other Fourth of July event, uh, and I couldn't be prouder of the team uh, for their implementation and, and ultimately a very successful event, so thank you for that acknowledgement.
Great. Our next item is number fourteen, which is our department reports. Is there any member of council that had any questions on any of the department reports inside of the agenda? Seeing none? Move on to item fifteen, which is our second call to the public. Is there any member of the public, whether in person or online, that would like to speak at this time? I do not see either, so I'm going to go ahead and close call to the public. Our next item is call to the council for current events only. Council member Mendosa?
First of all, I'd like to thank the staff, uh, for this Fourth of July event that we had, it was excellent, my family enjoyed it. We had family come in from Mesa, and they said they did not expect to have that kind of um, display that we had, I told them that we probably one of the best displays in Pinell County. Loved the food that came. I was supposed to be on a diet, I think I ruined that, but, um, my entire family was very, very happy with what went on. If you're counting vehicles, I brought seven with me, so um, your numbers might be higher than what, what you're projecting. But, uh, thank you guys once again for the hard work you guys have done.
Thank you. Council member Neil?
I, uh, also would like to thank the staff, uh, especially Florence PD and the Fire Department for the Fourth of July, it was, it was fun, and like Johnny said, I don't know if you counted our vehicles, because it was at least a thousand between the two of us. Although I have, just real quick, because I'm trying to go watch the game here, um, I got a chance to talk to a lady that, put it like, I thought, I love Florence with all my heart. I spoke to a lady with a passion for Florence that just eclipsed mine. And, uh, one of the things that we talked about are, and I've used in myself, the trash cans over here at the park. Driving down Main Street, it looks like crap. People abuse it. I, like I said, I use it myself, and I think they are very necessary, but we need to conceal them from Main Street, think about moving them, and it, it like, and to just think the way she told me, and I looked over and looked at it like, oh yeah, that looks horrible. So that is something I really like staff to look into and something to be done about. Also, there's another thing about it, um, a piece of the concrete over on Pinell and Ruggles. My mother was a victim of bad concrete, she had to have a knee replacement, and the whole concrete is gone over there, and I believe it's been over a year. And if we try to make this town look better, we, we need to start with the small stuff, especially when citizens pointed out to us. I, I truly believe that I'm doing my thing as a councilman, listening, and I'm trying to, but I really think we need to look at that also, maybe some other spots around town where concrete and sidewalks are busted up, just get them, get them fixed, I don't think it's going to be too much of a problem. Other than that, um, that's it, man, thank you.
Excellent, council member Anderson?
Well, I would like to e-echo the compliments to our town and staff for the Fourth of July. I know there's a lot of work, we sort of take it for granted for our police department and our community services and our fire department, for all the work they do, but we need to thank them though, because they do an excellent job. I would like to thank, uh, our town clerk who's not here tonight, and our town manager, the three of us went on a, on a town tour a couple weeks ago, and, uh, it was, it, it was quite, uh, eye-opening, because I was very impressed with how well many of our departments take care of their departments and employees. We only had, uh, one incident, and our town manager got that straightened out, so thank you, Brent, but, uh, we, uh, the other thing I was just going to mention is the Junior Prada, we need to get to going on that. And I'm just don't know if behind the eight ball on that or not, because uh, I've talked to Hezekiah about it, he said we want to talk about it at the next community service meeting, but we need to get that going. And, uh, I have also complained about that sidewalk. Councilman Neil just mentioned at Ruggles, so we need to get that fixed. That's all I have.
I'm sorry, one more thing.
Go ahead.
I forgot. It was Ms. Kathy Adams who I had spoken to, I don't think I mentioned her name, thank you, Ms. Adams. Also, the next tour, y'all, go, please, give me a call, I'd like to ride.
Actually, you can get a tour whenever you would like, you just coordinate with Mr. Billingsley, or Ms., with Mr. Billingsley, and just, they'll pick a day, you'll pick a day, a time, and show up, and they'll bring you all through all the departments.
Yeah, they told me that, you know, there's some busy people, I want to catch them when they not busy. They call me and tell me. I know. I will get with Mr. Billingsley.
Excellent, council member Hughes?
Well, I'm sorry that I, I missed the Fourth of July, it sounds like it's been a great, uh, it was a great experience. I'm in Illinois, and, um, hopefully next year I'll be there. Thanks, never know.
All right, thank you so much. So, I only have a few things, and I know that some people want to get to some Suns games. So this will be brief. If you, Mr. Billingsley, could have the sidewalk and the garbage cans checked out, and just let council know, you know, what the status is, what's going on, or any recommendations at that point, either at the next meeting or prior, in an email to us. I do know that with the Junior Prada, um, Mr. Hezekiah Allen, our community service director, is going to be working towards and talking about the plan, because we'll need to talk about how we're picking the royalty and what that will look like, but I do want to assure our community that the Junior Prada is moving forward, it's in our budget, and we will be ready for it. Mr. Billingsley?
Madam Mayor, uh, we just met with Public Works two weeks ago about the sidewalk. It has some complications with utilities, but, uh, it's, it's in the front of their mind. Uh, the trash cans, we've been working on for about two months, trying to coordinate with RAD and come up with a plan on that, but that should come to fruition pretty quickly. I reviewed a draft RFP regarding the Prada, I want to say last week, but I think Hezekiah wants to talk to the Community Services Department, or meeting about that.
Close to. The idea about those, uh, garbage bins, I, I thought we were going to move those over to the, uh, new place at, at the community, the services building, of that lot over there.
Yes, sir.
And I apologize, when I was taught, when you were talking, so I already knew the garbage is, I didn't realize you were talking to the ones at Heritage Park. So for our community, we built, and we're, have an eco station that's over by our Public Works. That's in the works, that's going to clear up that eyesore part. For some reason, what I thought that you were referencing was, and I know that we've had a few complaints in the past about some of the garbage cans on Main Street, and how they're dirty sometimes, and I know that our staff really tries to, you know, clean them up and go out there on a regular basis, and that's what I thought you were talking about, so it looks like we already have our solution. All right, so with that, I just again wanted to express my appreciation for the Fourth of July event, um, reaffirm to our community that we are going to be moving forward with Junior Prada, and with that comment about parada, and with that comment about wanting to meet with our boards and commissions first prior to coming to council, I want to say thank you to our boards and commissions for your service to the town of Florence and all that you do, it is very important, and I want you to know that it does not go unrecognized. I have nothing further this evening, so with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Ms. Hughes, we miss you out here.
Aw, thanks. I miss you guys.
All right. Have a good evening, everybody, thank you for coming out.